Thank you. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home Use Tribune, The Star Ledger, and on the Highland Park Planet on June 1st, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. By exit to my right and left of council chambers. Former council member Morris, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Roll call. Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George. Councilmember Hale.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stoney.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yeah.
Borough Attorney Brennan.
Present.
And Borough Administrator Huber.
Here.
Honors and awards tonight, we have two of our newest Highland Park's finest being sworn in, and I'm gonna do that, but right after the swearing in, we're gonna take a five to 10 minute break, and so we can have a conversation with them, then we'll come back into council chambers. So I'll do that at this meeting. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and justly impartially and justly, sorry, perform all the duties of the office of the Highland Park Police Officer, Highland Park Police Officer, according to the best of my ability. I do further solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear truth and faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. So let me go. Okay. All right. I, Tyler J. Morris. I, Tyler J. Morris. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All the duties. All the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Highland Park Police Officer. Of Highland Park Police Officer. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. I do further solemnly swear. I do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of New Jersey. Of the State of New Jersey. And I will bear truth, truth, faith. And that I will bear truth. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the government established. And to the government established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. So. At this time, we're gonna take a quick 10 minute recess.
There's refreshments in the offices outside. Come on outside, please.
Okay, now that we're back, celebration is over. We're gonna move to the approval of minutes. And motion to approve minutes as distributed March 13th, 2025, meeting.
May 13th.
May 13th, 2025. Meeting on May 20th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And now I'm gonna start off with council report, and I'm gonna start off with council member postman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Stoney. I chair the Health Services Committee of the Council. So just beginning with the light meeting, I have a pretty brief report. I just wanted to highlight that the Human Relations Commission's annual flag raising events kicked off earlier this evening with the Caribbean American Heritage Flag Raising, which was a lovely little event. And coming up next, we'll have on Wednesday, June 11th, the Pride Month Flag Raising, which will be from 6:00 PM to 6:45. And February 1st, June 19th, there'll be the Juneteenth Flag Raising from 5:00 to 5:45. And both those will be taken place outside of the community center. So please mark your calendars and join in the fun. For anyone who may be interested in organizing and planning events like these or any others that aim to bring our community together, please submit volunteer application, become a member of the Human Relations Commission. There are still a few vacancies on the commission, and the application can be accessed on the Borough website at hpborough.com and submitted to our municipal clerk, Jennifer Stansier. That was my report for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vargas.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. My name is Longmaides Vargas, and I serve as the Council of Arts and Recreation. I will also make a brief tonight with a focus on fireworks in the park, which is quickly approaching. The community and recreational center staff has been busy working on this event. We're excited to share a sneak peek of the incredible food and fun planned for this year's fireworks celebration. This year's event will feature a wide variety of vendors offering delicious cuisine and treats for many different cultures and tastes, perfect for dinner, snacks, and just, or just indulging in something fun. We encourage all residents to come down early, enjoy a meal, explore the options, and take part in the excitement. While the park officially opens at 6:00 PM, vendors will be ready to serve starting at 5:30 PM, so you can beat the rush and enjoy dinner before the festivities begin. In addition to food, this year's event will include balloon artists and stunt workers providing interactive entertainment, free face changing, a bounce house, live, masturbable course for kids, a gaming truck with fun for all ages, community table with fun interactive class cap projects and games free for all, vendors with unique novelty items and more for purchase. And of course, and I will conclude with a spectacular fireworks display launching around 9:15 PM. Mark your calendars and join us for an unforgettable evening of food, fun, and fireworks. And that is my report, but I do want to thank the Human Relations Commission for the great event. As I am from Puerto Rico, you could enjoy the event that highlighted all the different Caribbean cultures, so I do appreciate that they organized the event. Thank you.
Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Environmental Development Committee. Just congrats to Officer Barata and Officer Morris, and welcome to the family. We'd be very, very happy to have you. Please also remember, the farmers market is live and kicking Friday afternoons. It's really kicking into high gear now that summer is actually here. Real quick, I just, I wanted to quickly apologize to the public, but also to my council colleagues and the mayor for not catching the conflict with the Shiloh's holiday. And I just wanted to say thank you to both of them for understanding and flexibility for moving this again. I missed it, and, but I thank you both, thank everybody for being able to move it. And the fact that we made that change, I think, is just another example of how our town respects and cares for people of all faiths, traditions, races, and genders. And that tolerance, kindness, and understanding is not a zero sum game. And the more that we express those values, the more that we do know flag raising, the more that we talk about different communities, I think it's better. Unfortunately, in the rest of the world, we're seeing lots of acts of intolerance. Most recently, the terrorist attack on peaceful protests in Boulder, Colorado. I wish I could say it was a tragedy that won't happen again, but sadly, likely will. But I'm hoping that if we continue to work together like we do in Highland Park, maybe we can make a difference by thinking that we're all in this together. So that's just my short note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Hirsch. I'm thinking about what you said. I'm not ready to start yet. That was really, no, that was really nice, and I think that, you know, I mean. Thank you. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, and I do have a new report as well. I did want to just start by acknowledging Pride Month, wishing everybody a happy Pride Month, and let's celebrate together so folks can feel safe and loved. To my friends and family in the LGBTQ community, know that no barriers is surmountable, and that we are here to advocate as best as we can tirelessly as we can for a community where everyone is safe, welcome, and heard. So please, you know, please, please, please accept our. Pride Month is for celebrations, for celebrating inclusivity, it's for celebrating and promoting safe spaces, and to make sure that all of our neighbors can call Highland Park a safe and friendly place to tap. So just wanted to start with that, and I look forward to the flag raising. These flag raisings are one of my favorite events, Mayor, and the Caribbean flag raising is no exception. It's really great to see the Caribbean flag flying in the community center. And thanks to all. Just a few notices, bulk pickup by appointment only is underway still. Just a reminder that bulk waste collection will be by appointment. Pickups are scheduled on Wednesdays during the months of April, May, June, September, and October. So to make an appointment, please call Public Works at 732-247-9379. And any, every residence may request up to two collections per year. And just a note, the week after the townwide garage sale, there will be a bulk pickup. And that's Tuesday, October 21st, Thursday, October 23rd. Those are the pickup dates. No appointment is necessary for those. And just a note, recycling will not be collected during the week of October 20th to October 24th. Materials may be placed at curbside no sooner than one hour before sundown of the day prior to the scheduled pickup. Materials not properly secured, bundled, and unacceptable items will not be collected. Materials put out for collection without a scheduled appointment or on the wrong date also will not be collected. So please make sure to reach out. It is a very easy process. For more information on the bulk pickup program, you can go to www.hbpro.com. Many thanks to the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. Councilman George isn't here, but many thanks to them, Keep Middle Sex Moving, and the Highland Park Police Department for putting on a successful bike rodeo last Thursday. It was so much fun. My barbell kid and I were there and rode a few courses. Got some tchotchkes and, you know, all in the name of bike safety. So it was really great to see so many, and it was really crowded. It was great. It was great to see so many folks out there. And Mayor was there, and thank you, Mayor, for being there. And it was very cool then. And, you know, bike safety is paramount, so please make sure that you're taking all the precautions as we work hard to improve pedestrian cycling safety in Borough. The Environmental Commission will meet tonight at 8:00 PM on Zoom. So if you are interested in skipping out of this meeting and go to that one, you can go to www.hbpro.com for the link. Sustainable Highland Park is always busy, and they have a few, and they have a few really great events coming up. On June 7th, the Spring 2025 Clean and Green Weekend will be underway. And so you can, please join us for a weekend of native plant giveaways, a neighborhood cleanup, and a tour of the Meadows Trail near the Hudson Park. And they start at 9:00 AM. The 2025 Clean and Green Weekend starts at 9:00 AM at Mala Mike Graff Park. And then on June 7th, another community cleanup will take place also at Mala Mike Graff Park, Follin Carcy Park. We're gonna come together, clean up our community. Gloves, buckets, and other supplies will be provided. So many thanks to Sustainable for holding us in that. Speaking of Sustainable Highland Park, I did just want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of our beloved Tina Weiss House, who chaired Sustainable Highland Park for many years since 2018 and actually succeeded, our own Terry Hooper on Sustainable Highland Park. There's a lot to be said about Tina. There was, there was an incredible ceremony. Her funeral was just touching, poignant, and really showed the type of person that she was to commit her life to justice and environmental stewardship. And it takes a very, very special person to really drive that mission forward her entire life. And anybody who worked with Tina, anybody who knew her, knew that she, you know, would come to us, you know, in the spirit of environmental stewardship, not confrontational, but looking to work with us, and really looking to make everybody better. And that's a rare characteristic, I think, is just, you know, when folks actually make you a better person and make you do what you do better. And that's not something that I think we say about too many people, and for, at least for me, Tina was that person. She helped form the Highland Park Green Team and served as the Chair of Sustainable Highland Park for eight years. Tina, and just a few things, Tina managed a year-long effort, educational campaign, to voluntarily reduce reliance on plastic bags in Highland Park. And in February 2019, that work culminated when Highland Park Council passed ordinance number 1980, which is the Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance. With support from a $10,000 Sustainable Jersey grant funded by the PSENG Foundation, Sustainable Highland Park educated residents and merchants about the maintenance of reducing the use of single plastic, single-use plastic bags. And this multi-faceted campaign grew the purchase and distribution of 2,500 reusable bags along with the installation of signage and other educational materials in that town. And as we all know, that effort, those local efforts like that developed into a statewide prohibition of plastic bags. And for decades, you know, Tina has been a fixture at climate rallies, council meetings, and kitchen table organizing sessions. Anybody who was involved in the immigrant justice space knows Tina, knows her work with labor. And, you know, according to my neighbor, I'm gonna read, actually, this was a quote that Sustainable Jersey put out because Tina was named the June 2025 Sustainable Hero. She knew that she was going to get this honor, and, and of course, this, her passing on May 28th, you know, really puts a strong exclamation on this, you know, on this tribute. So Melanie McDermott, who's a resident here in Highland Park and who chairs our Shadr Advisory Committee, works closely, you know, with Sustainable Highland Park and worked closely with Tina. And she says that Tina was fierce and unwavering in her principles, yet never judgmental. She was deeply caring, embodied the rare virtue of that when in a progressive force entitled as advocate for cutting edge environmental causes. She fought passionately for what she believed in and earned the respect of allies and opponents alike. I couldn't have said it better. So we remember Tina, remember the impact that she had and will continue to have on Highland Park. And we are thinking about her family and sending as much love and comfort and peace as we can muster. So please join me just in Tina's house. Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Kim Chouhan.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, my name is Stephanie Kim Chouhan, and I chair Finance. Tonight, on the agenda, on the consent agenda, we do have an extension for the grace period for the third quarter property taxes. That is to align up with our certification of the budget, so use it wisely, but don't forget. And I also want to wish our community a happy Pride Month as well to our residents that will be celebrating, and to our allies, please try to educate yourself, take your children, take the whole family, and really stand side by side with our neighbors. Also, I had a chance to attend the New Jersey DCA Shared Services webinar that they held on Tuesday. It was a great seminar, well attended. Thank you, DCA, for putting this together. They talked about everything from Atlanta County is doing the regional court system to save money. As you know, here in Highland Park as well, we've been, the goal in my head is for revenues to meet with expenses, but that's been a challenge for us here as we're not trying to have our municipal court be a cash cow. So that's an option that I know even when Councilman Fine was here trying to do a shared courts agreement with another joint town. And it's something that has been working with other towns. There's shared services on the county levels that other counties are doing. You hear people talking about region high schools that I kind of, you know, you take what you want and leave what you don't. But anyway, from EMS, it was a two-hour seminar, and I look forward to attending more. And also, DCA have grants for one-time upfront costs as this council know we have done with some of our shared services that we currently have. So very informative. And I also wanted to remind everyone of a few dates. June 10th is, we have a primary election. Right now, currently, is early voting from June 3rd to June 8th. If you do need a ride to the polls, you can call 732-906-3680, and someone will be able to assist you. And since we won't be meeting again until the end of the month, I did want to wish everyone a Happy Father's Day, as much as I made a big deal of Mother's Day last. So I didn't want to forget that because my colleagues will remind me that I didn't watch them. And also, Happy Juneteenth, and that's my report, Mayor.
Borough Attorney. You ready to give your report?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Aaron Renaud. I'm gonna take a moment and kind of give my standard spiel as to what the next phase of this meeting looks like in terms of public participation. For those of you who have not been here before, there are several opportunities for the public to speak. The first one is paragraph 10. The public is afforded three minutes to speak on any item on the agenda that should be resolutions. And ordinances on first reading, although there are none tonight. Later on, there'll be a second public participation. That's paragraph 13. That allows the members of the public to speak on any topic that they wish, not agenda-related. The third option would, and we don't have one tonight, would be if there was an ordinance on second reading. Obviously, that's not gonna come to a factor tonight, so. And these are done just to help the meeting move along and to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. There is no back and forth. Once the participation is done, the council will make any comments that they deem necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did not forget to refer to the city mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick announcement, just to let folks know. We've been discussing the preparation of affordable housing plans to be in compliance with the state deadline, which approaches very quickly, June 30th. So the fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, as well as our spending plan, are now drafted. They've been shared with the planning board, and we'll have a hearing on June 12th to review the plan and hopefully adopt the plan in accordance with the protocol procedures. And then it'll come to the council on June 24th following their review for endorsement. But it is available now on the website. If you go to our homepage, go to Garden, and then go to Affordable Housing, you'll find it listed there if anybody would like to review. And if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me, and I'd be happy to walk you through it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And it's time for my very brief report. Before going to my report, I too want to say that we have lost a treasure of Highland Park, and that is Tina Weiss House. And I'm gonna ask for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. This month is a very busy month. We have a lot going on. Today, we kicked off Caribbean Heritage Month. We have Pride Month as well, and Juneteenth. So today was Caribbean Heritage Month. Next week, we'll have Pride, the Pride Flag Raising, and then we'll have Juneteenth. So I hope you can all come out and support these activities that we're having. It was interesting that this even at the flag raise and the Caribbean flag raising, I met someone that says he's lived in town for 43 years. It was the first time that he participated in anything in town, and I was really surprised that he, that was the first time he came to our community center, and he's looking forward to more events. And he was very encouraged by tonight's event, and he said he's looking forward to bringing this family and spread the word. And as we come together, I believe, I'm a bit prejudiced, so I'm gonna say only like we do in Highland Park because we embrace all our diversity, and religion, culture, people. We, I think we're a very tolerant town and embrace all the diversity that makes up our wonderful town and makes us so unique. So thank you for everyone that came out this evening. I have another Highland Park treasure that I, that is here with us tonight, and that's Diane Feldman. And Diane, Diane was awarded last week the Excellence in Cultural Access Award. I had the opportunity to go to Ground for Sculpture and to see Diane receive this award, and it made us all very, very proud that we have, from our little town in Highland Park, that we have someone here that provides insight not only to, about cultural access and how people can get, how to encourage towns, businesses, art museums, places where people go and enjoy what we take for granted, to make sure that those who are disabled or those who are not able that they, she creates spaces for them to have a voice, it's them to enjoy the everyday activities. I was very proud when they talked about the role that she played from when we go to a movie theater. Able-bodied person, we take it for granted that the seats are there and we just go. And Diane was very instrumental in making sure that there were seats that were handicap accessible. And it started out with one, then it went to two, and I believe it, but it's now to five. And I think that, that's a hero right there, that who can go out and advocate for, not just herself, but for many, many others who are in that same space. And then she took it a step further, and she, in the state plan, she also incorporated her thoughts and ideas, and I think that's gonna go through. So I just want to say kudos to you, Diane. We are fortunate and blessed to have you here in Highland Park to offer this advice, but not just to us, but to the entire state. Thank you. I also was at Keep Middle Sex Moving Bike Rodeo over at Barbell School. But one of the things that I'm most, most proud of is that they have bells for bicycles. I know years and years ago, we were trying to see if manufacturers would put bells on bicycles because when seniors are riding and are driving and walking in town, riding, there is under scooters. There's oftentimes bikes that pass them and have no bell. So to see that there are bells now that's accessible for bicycles, that's, that's a big one with me. So I was really happy to see Keep Middle Sex Moving putting bells on those, those bicycles that those kids, not only helmet, but they were doing the bicycle. So kudos to us. And that is my report. And that is my report. Now it's time for public participation. 21 minutes total, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. Terry, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's one person on Zoom, but we haven't raised.
Okay. We have no, no one in the audience. So see if there's none. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now we move on to the consent agenda. Ask members of the public if there's, members of the council, if there's anything that they would like to pull from the consent agenda for a separate. See none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 11A through 11E.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to conclusion at 9:00 PM. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom?
No hands up on Zoom.
See none. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Morning, favor.
Hi.
Good night and have a safe summer, everyone, and hope to see you at the various events that we have planned. Thank you.